I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Oh, hey, Dennis.
Councilmember Sander is absent. Councilmember Little is not here at this time. Councilmember Budge?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Here.
Mayor Pulapati?
Here. Going to ask the city clerk to announce the meeting's video recording and playback schedules.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will replay on Thursday, August 7th at 9:00 a.m. and Friday, August 8th at 9:00 a.m. on Metro Cable Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can be viewed on demand at youtube.com/metrocable14 and on the city's website.
I'd like to request Leroy Ladd to lead the pledge, and I invite the audience to remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Daniel D. Rosa with Cordova Neighborhood Church.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, thank you for having me. It's the first time here. I'm honored. Yeah, Florida, I am just thankful for everyone here, for the council, for the wisdom, the planning, the love for our city that is in this room. And so, please guide us, please let us be unified, please let what needs to be said be on our tongues, that we can, yeah, be a part of what you're wanting in this city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Good job.
So timely. With that, we move on to presentations, and I will ask Brenda Roach for the employee presentations.
Good evening, Mayor Pulapati, council members and staff. I'm Brenda Roach, Human Resources Manager. And tonight, I am honored to recognize four of our outstanding team members who have reached notable service milestones here at the city. At the city, we believe in celebrating these achievements. Our continued success is built on the dedication, the talent, and the hard work of employees like those that we are recognizing and celebrating today. It is a privilege and an honor to introduce them, and at the end of this presentation, I'd like to ask council to come down and take a photo with them. So first, I'd like to recognize Russ Ducharme for 10 years of service. Russ has joined the city in July of 2015 and now celebrates 10 years of service. As the Neighborhood Services Manager, he leads our code enforcement and animal services teams with dedication and strong commitment to community service. Next, I'd like to recognize Michelle Mengay.
No clapping? No clapping? Clap at the end?
Clap at the end, please.
Russ, they had a clap coming your way, as you know.
Michelle joined the city in August of 2010, and today, we recognize her 15 years of service. As the Finance Manager, Michelle has played a critical role in maintaining the city's financial health with professionalism and integrity. Next, I'd like to introduce Ka Vang for 15 years. Ka joined the city in May of 2010 and is proud to mark 15 years of dedicated service. Over the years, she has supported several departments in a variety of roles, and currently, Ka is a Management Analyst in the Housing Division, where her insights and support continue to make a lasting impact in our community. And lastly, we have Albert Stricker. Albert joined the city in March of 2005 and celebrates an impressive 20 years of service. As the Public Works Director, Albert has been the guiding force behind many infrastructure improvement projects that have helped shape our community today. So congratulations once again to Russ, Michelle, Ka, and Albert. Thank you for your years of service. Your dedication is not only appreciated, it's foundational to the city's success. So with that, Micah, if you would like to add any comments?
No, I just appreciate the recognition today. It is an honor to see the longevity in some of our team members and really appreciate all the years of support they've given to the community and to this organization. And so, with that, you can clap now, everybody, I guess, for the, like, there you go.
I think we're going to take a picture down there?
All right, picture done.
Wait, do they want to have, do you want to say something, Russ? Michelle, Ka?
Or just?
You know, you've been here 10 years and 15.
Twenty.
Well, 20 is not here, is it?
I guess, yeah, I can say a couple of things real quick. Just really grateful for all the support, you know, in regulatory work. The support can be wavering, and this has been a great council to work for and great staff. You can see my team here. This is just amazing, and I just appreciate everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I just want to thank the council and the leadership and all of the staff members here. It has made 15 years easy. It has been a pleasure to work for a city that is financially responsible, and we've had to make some hard conversations and some hard calls, but we do what's best for the city, and I'm proud of that.
Thank you. Ka?
This has been a rewarding journey working for the city. I have an awesome team, and everybody here is very supportive, so I'm really, really happy to still have a job.
Good evening. Albert Stricker with Public Works, and really appreciate this recognition, and it's been an absolute honor to serve our community and our council and our team for all of these years. And it's just been a huge pleasure to be a part of collaborating with the community to identify how can we improve safety in our communities every single day and building new connections between people and communities, being a part of promoting economic development, education. And a particular passion of mine is how can we incorporate art and beauty into all of our projects that we put together? So really appreciate the recognition and opportunity to be of service to the community. Thank you.
Come on, you amazing staff. You don't know me.
Russ, you should put your team in the picture.
Come on, team. Russ wants you in the picture. Albert, bring your team up, too. Come on, get on up here. Turn on the light. How are our team?
We're family. Go ahead. Ready, one, two, three.
Thank you. All right.
Congratulations.
Okay. Next up, public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and to state name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. I'd like to ask the city clerk to announce public comment.
Yes. First, we'll have Larry Leroy Ladd. Following Larry will be Helen Wellen-Bashaw, and then James Garcia. You'll have up to three minutes, Larry.
Thank you. I'm here wearing my co-founder of the city hat and specifically addressing Joe Little. At the previous meeting, he was just stripped of all his extra city assignments, which I found very disappointing. Rancho Cordova is no more clicky than most of the small towns in Iowa that I tried to recruit support for the presidential candidate I was working for. But we're talking about towns of 5,000, 10,000, 20,000, in the middle of cornfields. This is a city in Northern California with over 80,000 citizens, and you can't run a city like that like you're the ruling clique in high school. So I'm disappointed what you guys have done. I haven't seen Mr. Little do anything egregious, and the same, maybe he has, I haven't seen it. Same thing with Conrad Mayor at the other end. Politics is politics. But I'm glad to see Mr. Little is here, and he has offered to back me up in the past, and I offered to back him up, but have been not invited to any knife fights yet.
Next speaker is Helen Wellen-Bashaw.
Greetings. I'm Helen Wellen-Bashaw. I'm from the Tierra Grande area. I want to talk about what I find a little, I'm not thrilled about it. I reviewed all the videos that were put out for the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District meetings. At the meeting, I think it was on June 25th, one of the, it was read, the administrative procedures, proceedings, decision on removing someone from their position at a Rancho Cordova school, whether it be a volunteer or a paid position they were removed. The administrative judge is a neutral party. They follow the law, they use the evidence that is presented, and they rule a decision on it. The, I was upset when I saw four prominent people get up and support the person who was removed. In that administrative decision, they, the judge cited certain people were not credible. And all it takes is one person for that judge to find being credible for that decision to be made that was made. I was very disappointed to, it seems like a Friends Club when everybody got up and talked about all the great things the person that was removed from did for the organization. You don't, you're not with him 24/7, you're not seeing him interact with children, and my concern is the city, three members of this council and someone in a very nice position representing the city, got up and talked about all the great things he did. You ignored the fact that it affected a minor, minors, and for now, the city's going to look like they're going to stay with the Boys Club. I must commend Joe Little for, and he's an attorney, for supporting that judgment, because that judgment was made, and the Folsom-Cordova School District had to rule on what they were going to do with them. My concern is if we break away from the Folsom-Cordova School District and something similar comes to administrative judge, comes to this council, are we going to ignore the judgment that was put down, or are we going to back the person that is the person in limelight for the disciplinary action? Remember, the girls have to live the rest of their lives, and what he allegedly did is what they have to live with. Thank you.
Next speaker is James Garcia.
Hello, James Garcia, member of, president of Stone Creek, and I'm just here actually to just remind everybody, public service announcement at Folsom-Cordova Unified School District starting August 7th, and Sac City Unified is starting August 18th. So just be aware when you're out there driving around, there's going to be a lot more kids on the streets, walking, biking, driving. Take a little extra time, be cautious so you're not hitting anybody, because in blowing through stop signs. I appreciate the fact that we're getting some traffic calming in Stone Creek, so thank you, Public Works, for finally doing that. Took a little while, but you guys are doing it, so thank you. But just wanted to remind everybody out there, don't forget about the safety of our residents, especially the little ones. Thank you.
In addition to the three speakers that we've heard, there were six additional public comments that were emailed and have been distributed to the city council, placed on the city's website and have been printed for the public in the back of the council chambers. Those six individuals are the following: Tim Buscher, Pow Jin Kaluru, Vipin Laksmi Camp, Stephanie Mai, and Pradeep Jappala. Thank you, Mayor Pulapati.
Thank you. Next up, we move on to council reports. Councilmember Little?
Nothing. Heard you guys had a fun party. Nothing else to report. I heard someone got fired.
Is Councilmember Sander online?
He's not, he's not joining this meeting.
Okay. Councilmember Budge?
City did a wonderful job hosting the, what used to be called the League of California Cities, and now it's called something else, at City Hall. It's actually been a month.
CalCities, I think?
Something like that, yeah. It's actually been a month since we met, and that was a really great event. Both the Police Department and Metro Fire had a terrific opportunity, and I think they could have kept the audience enthralled pretty much the rest of the afternoon. Garrett and I attended a very uneventful HCP meeting, and the Assistant City Manager and I attended the SB 802 press conference downtown. It's, that was very enlightening, and it's going to be the start of a fairly lengthy Went to a wonderful event that the Airshow hosted, all about Girls STEM, I'm sorry, not Girls STEM, but it was STEM for everybody, and got to hear our favorite Colonel Merrill, our only black lady U2 driver that's ever been, talked to all the kids and just really had them eating out of her hand in terms of the incredible information that she had to share with them. The RT meeting has been fairly eventful because there is a very large conversation going on about funding for regional transit and the other transit operators in the Six County region. The Federal Highway Administration and FDA have both established some parameters in terms of MOU that should, that should be adopted in this region, and that's a conversation that's just beginning and will continue Thursday morning at the Seco Transportation Committee meeting. And the best thing, the best thing, Madeline knows what I'm talking about, the best thing was the graduation for youth at City Hall that took place last week, and I attended. I thoroughly enjoy hearing what all these kids have to talk about. We must have had two dozen kids in the class, including yours, and they make their presentations. This one was, had to do with talking about the transportation plan that's kicking off. And one of the teams made a presentation about rainwater gardening, one made a presentation about power generating sidewalks. There is a sidewalk from England, a tile, the sidewalk from England that actually can generate power as you walk over it. Pixel electric, whatever that means. Then they wanted to talk about solar powered lights to light the way to White Rock Park. They want to talk about wider sidewalks, something that's dear to my heart, and then beautifying roads, making sure that our roads are more attractive, that they're not just plain and generic, and that they might even have a Rancho Cordova identity to them. And then finally, beautification of bike trails, expanding the bike trail system and planting flowers like lavender and zinnia and poppies and fuchsia and some more oak trees, and adding benches, adding trash cans, adding ground lights. All of these, these things are so well thought out. All these kids do all the research, and then they put together a budget, they put together a timeline, they put together their whole, it's a really very much involved concept of how this could be accomplished, and it complete with PowerPoint demonstrations, and the whole thing feeds into the overall update of the active transportation plan. And again, I am once again amazed at the thought that these kids put into this kind of conversation. They have advised us in the past about things like Mills Crossing, and I'm sure that this class will continue to advise us in the future. And that's the fun I've been having these last month.
First, very boring meeting at HCP, which I went to, Linda, terribly. It's very interesting is that I don't think, seeing a commission slowly turn itself down is an interesting event. I've never seen an actual commission. Thank you for the advice of talking with those individuals, but it's interesting because I've been working with other cities, and we're trying to figure out what we're going to do. And the cable commission was built on three structures. One was making sure that you can see your council meetings, the second, on regular TV. The second was, we have a bunch of non-for-profit, from like PBS to Access Sacramento stations that run off the money that you get with it. And the third, which is donating to schools like Cordova High and other ones to help them with their TV programs. And it looks like we're going to lose all the revenue for all those, except for maybe the first deal, which is keeping people able to watch their politicians on TV. And so, it's an interesting thing to see it, like, we're going to have to break it down to basically the bare minimum, because the cable and all the companies have figured out a way to go around having to pay what they used to pay so that we could keep these nonprofit channels up. And so, I grew up watching Access Sacramento, and, because that was the nonprofit, and PBS, because that's where you watch Sesame Street. And those stations may not exist in the next three to five years if everything keeps going, or they're going to have to go back to what I remember was, is they always had to drive for the bag, because every parent has that bag that you bought from PBS with the, you know, with the big bird. So I'm doing my best to try to get it and ease it out, but it's, I don't even think we can afford our employees after probably next year. So we'll be figuring out a way what the next steps are. I think the nonprofit stations are going to have to figure out a way to start making profit and kind of go in that direction, and other ones are, what is the major piece that my constituents want to say? So anyone online, if you're concerning, those are my three tiers. I'd love to actually hear from you guys about what tier you'd like to see us maintain. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So the STA, New Transportation Funding Committee, met, and we had Albert Stricker represent. The staff met with the executive staff of most of the agencies to talk about the potential measure, and there's going to be a polling to be conducted possibly in August in an outreach program to see which agencies would like to participate, what is the funding plan, what's the allocation between transit, road maintenance, and capital improvements to see if we want to go ahead with the potential measure. I'd like to give kudos to staff for a really well-done event for CalCities. It was a record attendance, and we got really good reviews after the event on what a beautiful building we have and what wonderful staff we have and how smooth the whole event went off. And I would also like to give kudos to the Cordova Community Council for a wonderful Fourth of July, both for the parade and for the fireworks. I think that was another record attendance for Rancho Cordova in a time where a lot of cities were not able to do fireworks. I think Rancho Cordova not only did it, but did it in a fantastic way. So kudos to the Cordova Community Council. With that, I pass it on to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I will second the motions on the CalCities event, and the team that put that together really appreciate them. And it's not every day you get to invite, you know, 40 or plus other elected officials into City Hall and talk about some of the things that we're doing, so that was a very exciting time to do that. The other, just want to recognize, is the GAT, which is the Great America Triathlon. I had the pleasure of, I guess, introducing the, or, you know, welcoming the group there on Saturday a couple of weeks ago. And so, I think I might have committed to doing it next year or something in that conversation, and I think there was nothing lost on me, that my last name is Runner, and I was not participating in the race there, but I think I might have committed to some people that I might do it. But there was six city teams, I believe, that were out there supporting the event, and I think did a great job of participating and celebrating.
How big is the city team?
So it's three, well, it's probably about 18 people.
So 18 people?
Yeah. Of the city staff that was out there doing the work.
Okay.
So really appreciate them and all participating in that great community event. The only other thing I just want to address real briefly is some of the public comments tonight that were received from the Sun Creek Development, that conversation that occurred at the Planning Commission a couple of weeks ago. That is, was reported in the Business Journal. That is not a done conversation, so I know we received some public comment about that that's just, was a hearing to talk about the desire of the landowner to make some changes. Ultimately, we'll probably have a conversation that was had the same at the Planning Commission, to have that same workshop-type conversation with the council as well about the future and what we want to see from that property. So we did receive some public comments on that. Just wanted to let kind of the public and you all know that that's not a final conversation, but a future conversation to come in the future. And so, just with that, that's my update.
I really appreciate your talking about that. You know, for those of us reading it, it was probably very distressing simply because one of the, one of the things that we've had to do around here was go back and add commercial and office space to the huge swath of nothing but residential that Sacramento County adopted. And so, it seems counterintuitive to have the discussion going in the other direction.
It's a future conversation that we'll get back to.
Future conversation.
Sounds good. Though, one thing that struck me is, I don't want to repeat of the workshop that the Planning Commission did, I mean, it has to be the next step that, by the time it comes to us.
Yeah.
Okay. We're going to move on to consent calendar items. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Are there any items council wishes to push, pull from consent calendar? Do we have?
Seeing none, I'd like to move.
Do we have any public comment?
We do not have any public comment for the consent calendar.
Seeing none, I'd like to move item 13.1 through 13.9.
Second.
Can I ask the city clerk to call a roll, please?
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Little?
Yep.
Councilmember Sander is absent. Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Yep.
Mayor Pulapati?
Yes. We'll move on to consent public hearing items, and they are none. Public hearing items, and they are none. Next up, regular calendar items, and I'll ask the city clerk to please announce the subject.
16.1, the subject is update on illegal firework enforcement and temporary firework stands.
Ten-year veteran Russ?
Really quick before, is she still here? I just want to welcome Troop 368 from Carmichael. Welcome to our council chambers. Very cool to have you here.
Could you expand on that?
We have a Girl Scout or Boy Scout troop. Boy Scout troop here today, right now, to view us for her merit badge, and she chose this illustrious body, which is awesome. So welcome.
Could you, please stand up?
No. Yay, all right.
Thank you. Okay, Russ and Erin for staff report.
Well, good evening, Mayor Pulapati and council members. Russ Ducharme. Russ Dusharm, Neighborhood Services Manager. I'm here tonight with Fire Chief, Fire...
Marshal.
Marshal, Fire Marshal Amy Nygren.
I got promoted.
Yeah. I'm working for you here. And Finance Analyst Erin Nader, and we're going to give you an update on illegal firework enforcement and temporary firework stands. So our goals tonight is to review activities on the Fourth and Fifth of July, view the historical and current enforcement data, and update and review the firework stand license itself, and propose municipal code updates to the council. So just a broad look at the Third and the Fourth specifically this year. We conducted our field events on, our field operations on July 4th and the 5th. But as you probably all were aware, or felt, the weather really cooperated with us this year. The highs were very manageable, specifically for our drone teams. Last year, we ran into some issues with our drones not being able to stay up in the air for excessive periods of time, which limited our enforcement activity. So the weather was working for us. We had four two-person CSU and code enforcement teams this year. We also had four two-person drone teams throughout the city, which we increased by one. And then we had two staff back at Neighborhood Services, working the Rancho Cordova Connect. This year, our communications team did a really good job getting the word out on how to report besides calling the non-emergency line with RCPD and reporting through our Rancho Connect system. This slide just shows our kind of heat map of our calls for service. These are combined calls for service, both RCPD and our Rancho Cordova Connects. And then our calls for service, just our activity for the Third and the Fourth. This year, we fielded 129 calls for service, up quite a bit from last year, 45%. Our calls for service coming into Rancho Cordova Connect was up quite a bit, 40%. We fielded 80 calls for service there. We have identified 64 properties this year for administrative citations. All properties that were reported to us that we weren't able to get to, whether it was a field team or the drone team, will receive a courtesy letter providing information about our ordinance. So steps moving forward, last week, we issued all of our administrative citations. There is a 30-day appeal process. We have tentatively scheduled the second week of September for our appeal hearings. Those tend to stack up quite quickly. And then our courtesy notices went out also last week to the properties that were not identified as having illegal firework activity with our drones or a field team, but were reported through RCPD or Rancho Cordova Connect. My one recommendation for our ordinance modification would be to eliminate our current makeup of how our fines are implemented. So right now, if a property is identified as launching illegal fireworks, it's $1,000 fine. If we find them the next day or within 365 days, it goes to a $2,500 fine, and then the third violation will be a $5,000 fine. Any illegal fireworks that are launched from parks or schools is a $10,000 fine. So in the essence of reach, and not hyper-focused on how much we're issuing in fines, issuing a $10,000 fine, I think, is the way to go. Looking at what other jurisdictions are doing in the area, they're adopting a stacking method, which is $1,000 per violation. So if they launch 10 illegal fireworks, they're going to get a $10,000 fine. Whereas as soon as we identify one illegal firework goes up, we document it, and then we're on to the next. So we cut down our time of observing the violation, and we're on to the next. So we have further reach. I think our goal here has always been, as a council, is to educate with our enforcement, not to just be heavy-handed by issuing fines. Having more reach, I think, will send that message, and hopefully result in less activity. This is just a slide that kind of shows how the jurisdictions around us are implementing their fines for illegal fireworks right now. Elk Grove, which has gotten quite a bit of headline on how they're issuing their fines, they capped their fines at $10,000 after last year. So by us adopting the $10,000 fine and just moving on provides us with a little bit more time for further reach into the community. And I'll pass it off to you.
Okay. I don't have fancy slides.
Just here.
There we go. Amy Nygren, Fire Marshal for the Sacramento Metropolitan Fire District. And we start talking about fireworks and enforcement early on. Metro Fire leads the Sacramento Regional Fireworks Task Force. This brings together law enforcement, code enforcement, PIOs, other fire agencies, as well as a representative from the DA's office. And we start talking about this early on. This year, we started in March, and it is, we meet at least once a month up until the Fourth of July. Again, we talk about sharing best practices and strategies for enforcement, coordinating public education and messaging, and developing staffing and operational plans. I wish, will say that Russ and his team do an outstanding job, and they've been at the forefront of solutions. Safety is the main factor when we're out dealing with enforcement. We deal with large crowds, gathering of crowds, people drinking and alcohol being involved. It can be very unsafe, not only for code enforcement, but our first responders when we're responding to these incidents. So several years ago, Russ and his team were one of the first in the region that started using UAVs and drones for enforcement, and it has taken off. This year, throughout the region, we had the Sheriff's Department, Citrus Heights, Rancho Cordova, as well as Metro Fire, all with drones or UAVs up. And this came from information and technology that was brought forth from Russ and his team, and they did an amazing job. We'll be looking at some additional safety factors for next year. What we found is that being behind a gated safe area for our operators is the best for the teams. Metro Fire had ours at one of our fire stations. Talking with Russ this year, we'll be looking at using some of Metro Fire stations next year to keep their teams safe and out of the public way, so they're not being interfered with. Just some statistics from Metro Fire. We did see a trending downward this year on fires and incidents. So between the July 1st and 5th timeframe, Metro Fire had 1,615 incidents. So that's all incidents, medical aids, fires, everything we responded to between that timeframe. That was down 196 this year. Within Rancho Cordova specifically, it was 146 incidents, down 21. Fire incidents throughout Metro Fire, 163 this year, that was down 28. And then in Rancho Cordova, 11, you were down one this year. Fireworks, fires, this is where Metro Fire had just a little bit higher this year. We had 50, so that was plus seven from last year. And Rancho Cordova had four. I put a little asterisk next to it because we, there was a fire in the parkway that was across from Hagan Park, but was part of the Hagan fireworks incident. So even though it was on other property, I kind of put an asterisk there. Our fire investigation staff was up-staffed this year from July 3rd and the 5th, so we had teams out taking care of all those fire investigations. For fireworks booths, our inspectors conducted inspections, 152 booths throughout the district, 17 of those within Rancho Cordova. Fireworks displays, there were six total that we handled, two in Rancho Cordova. So our teams conduct all the plan reviews for those. We're onsite for the pre and post-display, making sure that everything is safe during those displays. And then we'll be working with Rancho Cordova PD and Cordova Community Council to get, conduct an after-action report and review for the, for the display at Hagan Park and the special event. And then in closing, illegal fireworks continue to be a challenge for local communities throughout California. It's not just a local problem for us to solve. This is a state problem, and we need more help. We'll continue to work diligently at the local level, but we encourage each of you to take that next step and go to the state level to help us where you can. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Erin Nodery, and I'm an analyst with the Finance Department. Today, I will be talking to you, oh, sorry. Today, I'm going to be talking and providing a little bit of background on the licensing process for the Safe and Same fireworks. A little bit of concerns that staff has had with the process, and then at the end, we'll be asking for council feedback on some proposed recommendations. So since incorporation, the city has processed business license for temporary firework stands for Safe and Same fireworks. How that process works is the distributors, which is predominantly Phantom Fireworks and TNT, they partner with the nonprofit organizations, and they help them through the application process to provide them the paperwork, the site plans, get all the approvals needed, and property owner as well. Our current code has eligibility requirements, and the nonprofit must be tax-exempt, have a principal meeting place in the city or its adopted planning area, at least one year of continuous existence, and a minimum of 20 members. So just a little history on how many licenses we've issued. We've been averaging about 17 licenses a year over the last few years, with a higher peak in 2020. And since 2021, we've had five new organizations apply for a license. So this dashboard right here is our current 2025. So we had a total of 18 applicants, and we were able to issue 16 licenses. The reason why there's a discrepancy between the two is because two had to withdraw because they did not get property owner approval. As you can see, Phantom Fireworks had four stands with three organizations, and TNT Fireworks had 12 stands with 11 organizations. So challenges with the current process. Some existing organizations operate multiple stands, which might make it difficult for new organizations to secure stand locations. There's some uncertainty about the physical presence of some applicants, and there's questions about whether proceeds are actually benefiting the Rancho Cordova community. So we took a look at local jurisdictions and to see what some of them have been doing. So Rancho Cordova has very similar, similar code requirements to Citrus Heights, Elk Grove, and Sacramento County. We allow two stands per organization. We have no limit on the number of stands throughout the city, and we just issue a license on it. So the city of Roseville, Rockland, and Woodland, they both, they all allow one booth per organization. Roseville and Rockland have a set limit to the number of stands, 15 or 20, respectively. And then Folsom and Woodland, they have a methodology of one stand per so many residents. They all have a little bit different of a system, whether it be a priority and then a lottery, or just a straight lottery system. Some organizations got grandfathered in as well, too. Other things to note is the city of Citrus Heights and Rancho Cordova require a minimum of 600 feet spacing between stands. And while staff is not proposing any recommendations in regards to organizational types, we did want to highlight what some other jurisdictions have done. So the city of Rockland, they spell out that an organization's purpose must include civic, veteran, welfare, or charitable focus. While the city of Woodland, they have, organizations must be youth-focused, with at least 90% of the proceeds supporting youth programs within the city. So staff recommendations for council consideration. So we are recommending that we add a definition of what principal and permanent meeting place be. So that can include anything from a permanent structure, a playing field, a geographical area, maybe clarifying that a temporary or occasional use of a private home, park, or business venue does not qualify. We also recommend removing planning area from current code eligibility requirements and limiting that just to the city boundaries. The current planning area almost doubles the total population. We also recommend increasing the minimum distance between stands from 600 feet to 1,000 feet. This would ensure that there would not be over-congestion problems within, you know, parking lots or shopping centers. We're recommending reduce the number of stands per organization from two to one, and then create a stand limit of one stand per 5,000 population, based off the current population that would maintain our 17 stand average that we've been seeing over the last few years. If we do create a stand limit, we are also recommending creating a lottery process of the number of applicants exceed the allotted amount. And we'd also like to hear from council if there was anything that staff missed that you would like us to consider as well, too. And based off of today's conversation, we'll be coming back at a later date with some proposed amendment changes to the municipal code.
Is that your final slide?
Yes, thank you.
Go back to the previous slide. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. So we'll go ahead and we'll start with those who are here in person. We'll start with Jamie Burlison. Following Jamie will be Donnie Burlison, then Kevin Sims, Dennis Rubell, and Michael Munson. Jamie, are you here? If you'd like to come forward. You'll have up to three minutes. And then following Jamie will be Donnie.
Good evening. Thanks for having us today. My name is Jamie Burlison with Bayside Life Church. And did all of you get the email that we sent today? Okay, I hope you had a chance to read that. I'm going to let Donnie go ahead and share our passion and our love for the Rancho Cordova community.
Hi, hi, Mayor. Council members, thank you for listening to us today. We started Bayside Life Church in 2005, about almost 20 years ago. We started here in the Cordova Senior Center, and then when Sunrise Elementary School was completed, we rented that for about 10 years, until we could get our own building just behind Costco that we renovated, and we leased for five years there. During the COVID, we had to, we lost the lease during COVID, as half of our members did not return to in-person services. So we moved our in-person services to a church in Fair Oaks that we partnered with another church in Fair Oaks. However, we still focus most of our outreach here in the Rancho Cordova area. For example, I partner with Jason Harper with the Rancho Cordova Athletic Association to put on their athletes-only events and sponsor that each year. It's only second year. We also work with, fellow Christian athletes. We sponsor 18 lunchtime huddles, providing pizza and motivational speakers for the kids. Capital Compassion, we work closely with them to distribute goods and services to needy families. We also have several home-based marriage mentoring groups that meet in Rancho Cordova, and we have about 110 active members in the Rancho Cordova area. Our concern is that by narrowing it down to the principal and permanent meeting place, that would prioritize footage over substance, it would disqualify nonprofits like ours and that remain actively engaged in the life of the city. And so we'd just like you to take that into consideration, and we actually sent you some things to look at there, too. So thank you so much for listening to us today.
Next speaker is Kevin Sims. Kevin, you'll have up to three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Pulepotti and his council members. My name is Kevin Sims. I'm a resident of Rancho Cordova and a longtime music teacher. I'm here tonight representing the Cordova High School Music Boosters, our local nonprofit organization that supports instrumental music at Cordova High School, including our band, orchestra, and jazz band. As someone who works closely with these students and programs every day, I've seen how essential community support and fundraising are to their success. For many years, fireworks booths have played a vital role in helping our, helping us raise the funds needed to keep these programs thriving. Understandably, changes to how these booths operate can stir emotions and create confusion. That's why I believe it's so important that any conversations about modifying booth operations include the voices of those most directly affected, like our music boosters and other local nonprofits. Including these groups in the dialogue just isn't a kind gesture, it's a meaningful step to create transparency, collaboration, and trust. It shows that we're working together, not just making decisions in isolation. Let's continue to build on the strong foundation of support the city has shown for our youth and the arts. Let's work together to address concerns and find solutions that ensure these programs remain vibrant and accessible for generations to come. Thank you for your time, your service, and your continued commitment to our community.
Next speaker is Dennis.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, my name is Dennis Rubell, President of Rubell Communications, and it's my honor to appear this evening on behalf of our client TNT Fireworks. I'm here and would like to express my appreciation for the commitment of this body, as well as city staff, to both the public safety and the nonprofit community here in Rancho Cordova. I want to briefly address the five points that I emailed to you earlier today. First, we strongly support increasing the penalty for illegal fireworks, whether through a $10,000 flat per violation fine or stacking fines per incident. The punishment should match the risk. Its time violators feel the true weight of the danger they're creating. Second, we urge you to align your nonprofit eligibility rules with the state fire marshal's model ordinance. Instead of focusing just on whether a group owns or rents a building, we ask that you prioritize what they're actually doing in the city and how they serve residents and where their firework profits are reinvested. I would call your attention to the attachment that I provided you in the email in which principal and permanent meeting place is defined by the state fire marshal in that body model ordinance, as shall include but not limited to a permanent structure, playing field, geographic area, or service population which resides in or is located in the city of blank. Third, we recommend moving the earliest submission date for stand applications to May. That simple change would reduce the confusion and help city staff better understand how many real applicants there are each year. Fourth, after tonight's meeting, we ask that the city bring together all the relevant stakeholders, nonprofits, city staff, TNT Fireworks, and Phantom Fireworks for a collaborative working session. It is the best way to find balanced, practical solutions that reflect everyone's input. And finally, we support a cap of one fireworks stand per five thousand residents, but if not all, excuse me, if not all seventeen spots are reclaimed, allow the approved nonprofits to enter into a lottery for the remaining permits. That will ensure that the city's full allocation is used to the benefit of the community. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Next speaker is Michael Munson.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you for having us here. I am the assistant pastor of the Way of Life Church here in Rancho Cordova. We have operated a fireworks booth in, for fourteen years, I want to say, here in the city. And so, first off, as Dennis said, we want to thank the council for their strong stance on the illegal fireworks and cracking down and really pushing that forward. But I did want to show my support for the motion to bring together the stakeholders and those of us who operate stands as well as TNT members when changes are being made and affected that affect us and affect our communities and, you know, the people that we're supporting. In the fourteen years I have operated the stand, obviously, there's been lots of changes over the years. And, you know, I for one, you know, our organization has never once had an opportunity to speak up about some of the changes. For instance, the one we're talking about right now of increasing the limit for between stands of up to a thousand feet. Things like that come into play, you know, especially with us, like we are kind of neighbors with the Cordova Music Boosters back there. And currently, our stand is, I think, six hundred and fifty feet away. But there's never been any type of, you know, negative impact for us being so close to another stand. So, I do want to support, you know, when changes are being made like that, to take some sort of collaborative discussion between the people and the stakeholders that are being impacted to make sure that every aspect is looked at, every, every potential impact to any of the organizations can be seen. So, I do want to really support that we kind of do that collaboratively. Thank you.
In addition to the speakers that we heard from this evening, the following individuals submitted public comment via email. Pastors Donnie and Jamie Burleson and Dennis Rubell. Those have been, those comments have been distributed to the city council, placed on the city's website, and printed for the public in a binder in the back of the council chambers.
Before we go to council comments, I would like to break this up into two fines and the staff recommendations. So, can we go to the slide where you talk about changes in fines? Council comments on this, Ben?
I'll start with the first one. So, totally agree we need to increase the fines, but I think, and I, and I have to ask this curiously, I think we're not doing enough in communication to, and it's, it's something else you got to focus on. I like the drones, I think that's a clear thing, but even I, in the Anatolian, it's totally allegorical, I felt more fireworks, illegal fireworks going off in the Anatolian area. I even saw someone with, looked like a bazooka launcher on his shoulder, running through the community, shooting it off. And I feel like we need to tell people that if you get caught, it's a $10,000 fine. And that means more social media, more, I mean, I'm just going to sound lame, but Instagram, TikTok, Facebook, like get the message out there that we're a no-tolerance city and if we catch you, the fine is aggressive. And it's not, you're not going to get away with it in our city. And I think we just need, because we were tearing down, and I think that also due with the fact that we had a, it was super dangerous two years ago, but I don't want to get back to that place where we start to light up as they start to get more. I want to see more of that. So, there's that one. And then I think we need to double down on the drones. I know it's hard to find drone and drone operators because of the technology. I would suggest that you look more at marketing companies because they have drone operators that you can rent for the night or the day to help out with this kind of thing. But I, I, you know, we don't want to bankrupt anybody, but one fire cost a million dollars to Rancho Cordova. All it takes is one person's house to burn down and that's a million dollars of, and a displaced family and terrible times, and they should know better. We have a bunch of safe fireworks. I mean, the stuff you can buy is ridiculous at this point. And if you're not willing to take that safe, then we're not willing to have it. It's just, I don't need people being more afraid. I mean, there's tons of people in this community that show up. I get talks to every time about the Fourth of July, what can you do to help? We're doing good things, obviously. The fires went down, thank God. Thank you for what you're doing, really appreciate that. But we need to take even a more aggressive, and I think really doubling down on the drones and doubling down on the communication will do more for the people telling them that we're going to find you, we're going to watch you. And I don't think we can publicly show who got arrested for drone fines, can we legally? Could we? Maybe even doing that. I'm trying to shame people. I don't want someone's house to be burned down. I mean, like, the most we can do is, you know, social media, shame on you, you're burning someone's house down because it's so critical. It just takes one silly, not even silly, but one of those dangers, like I, I saw them, like they went up and, and if that hits someone's house during a dry scene, it burns down, it's a million dollars and the whole community gets to suffer from that. And so, I mean, I would be along the lines of showing people online or in our social media, people that got caught blowing up and burning down people's community. I mean, I want, I want pressure of the community to be like, look, don't do this. Go somewhere else. Just don't risk your own neighborhood to burn down. And maybe that could be some, so maybe we can work with Maria to come up with some marketing campaign that really is like, keep Rancho safe from fire. I don't know how we're going to do it, but don't, you know, this is what I'm leaning on you guys for. And, and, and also, I know we're not the best at it. If you could find out who had a better result than us on the fireworks and kind of adopt, you know, I saw you listed some of the communities and they're going up, are they seeing the result they want? Like, are now the illegal fireworks people coming into Rancho because we're the cheapest place to let a firework off? And, or something along those lines? And then, you know, scare people. We, Rancho Cordova collected ten to fifteen million dollars in fines due to fireworks. You know, we want to make it so it's overly aggressive because if you can just get the, the reputation out there that we're a no-nonsense, I mean, like, it's so critical that we don't burn down the riverfront area. It's such a tinderbox all the time. It would take one and we would lose our orchards and everything else underneath. So, let's, those are the kind of things I, and I agree. Let's raise the violation up, totally agree with that. But let's, let's really communicate what happens if you do something like that. That's all I got. Thank you.
Council member, Budge?
Yeah, actually, I, I really do agree with everything that Garrett just said, pretty much. Because it seems like all the publicity this past couple of, well, since the Fourth of July, has been about that the jurisdictions are going to the $10,000 fine. So, he's absolutely right. We don't want to stand out because we're lax on people. And I agree, public shaming is a really good thing. And for all the fact that I don't do TikTok and whatever all that is, yeah, put it out there, okay? Let's, let's make sure that we really tell anybody and everybody that we think this is a good idea.
Council member, Little?
Yeah. A few things. Some things I would have liked to see in the report that I didn't see any mention of was, I know we're trying to encourage people to use the Connect app and the website. I had constituents report, they're not website users, they want to pick up the phone and dial the non-emergency line and it's clogged for significant parts of the night. That's a huge no-no to me. That drives constituents crazy is you need government to help you when you're in a rut and you call the line and it's just a busy beep. And so, that, that really needs to be addressed, even though considering we're trying to get people to pivot not to pick up the phone, people will. I'm curious about the number of persons who we issued citations to in 2025 that received a second one. I'm also issue, interested in how many citations in 2024 actually led to fines? I know we issued more. I wonder how many of those actually led to consequences? I'm curious why the number of citations is lower despite an increased number of calls for service? I raised the communications issue that Garrett talked about a few months ago and I'm, I'm not clear yet on what we did towards that direction. Sounds better if someone else says it, though. I didn't hear any of the specific challenges about turning citations into fines. It sounds like that's our biggest trouble, is not finding people, but converting it into a prosecution and holding them accountable. And if we're not asking for more drone teams, then, you know, how are we converting citations to fines? And I see that even harder with the flat $10,000 fine. The other jurisdictions you talked about, Linda, they're not doing $10,000 for one time, they're doing $10,000 for sensitive places. They use stacking that's way more likely to be upheld by an administrative hearing officer. If you bring, and I think Adam would probably sympathize with this, is you bring a $10,000 fine for one little firework, and I'm the biggest anti-illegal firework person, but the hearing officer is going to be like WTF, I'm not going to find this person, $10,000 for one little firework. So, I think the stacking approach, which is what all of our smart neighbors do, is actually the better one. There's a lot of fires that happen that go unreported to Metro Fire because the community's out that night and there was a lot of incidents in my neighborhood of people grabbing the hose and helping their neighbor out. Quicker to do that than to call 911. You can put it out yourself. So, I think the number of outbreaks is underreported. I've harped on this before, but I wonder what's the plan for January one? Why is this just that one bad night of the year and not the other bad night of the year? It's just as bad in my neighborhood. I agree that always communication and education is one tool we have, but something we have to realize is that the community largely likes them. You can go on social media, find that out. They know it's wrong, they know it's dangerous. They're going to, even if you tell them, they're going to do it anyways. So, that's where the deterrent effect comes in. And I would like to see research and outreach into our neighboring jurisdictions to figure out how our per capita, per, we're eighty-six thousand people or whatever, how much budget and how many staff people did Elk Grove deploy compared with our population? I know they're a lot bigger. And that would help me, and I don't want to micromanage, but that would help me understand how heavy are we going at this compared to everyone else? That's all I have.
Thank you. So, I would like to see some data on what our citations were in 2025. This year, we did have $10,000 fine for sensitive areas near schools and parks. So, with that citation, did we not have any citations in that park?
We did not issue a $10,000 fine this year.
Compared to last year, 2024?
Correct.
And there was enough messaging around the fact that there's going to be a $10,000 fine in this area and not in the other areas. So, I'd like to see the data between twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five to see, you know, what is it between the areas with this, with the $10,000 fine versus the areas without? Part two is, I would like to see the age range of the folks that are actually getting caught. Because if this is, I don't want parents to be burdened with this fine because if it's the youth, then is it more youth education? Or what is it? What is the socioeconomic spectrum for the folks that are being caught? Because you don't want to completely bankrupt a family over a $10,000 fine where they could be educated and you could say, this is what's coming up. Part three is, while I really do like the fact of public shaming, that usually does not work. I do not want to bring this, but like the Columbine shootout, like, most people, because of the popularity they gained with it, they know they can do this and they like the notoriety. And maybe they just want their face in public. Some people might use it for the wrong reasons if we go that route. Part four is if you see in national parks where we say, do not litter. In fact, on the areas where you say, do not litter, there's actually more litter. Studies have shown that when you show that your peers are not doing it, you know, this is our, this is your space, this is your park, thank you for not littering. Or something along those lines versus, we're going to find you for littering, then people like to see how they can get away with doing this. So, I would really encourage you to see, do the research, see the data on what has worked. Because it's, we could find, but maybe that's not the easiest, that seems to be the easiest solution, but maybe that's not the only solution, maybe there are other ways to go about it. I feel that education might really help us on this. The fact that this is our community, our city, and so, we need to talk to each other, talk to the neighbors that are doing this. That might help more than just a blanket for a $10,000 violation. Yeah, let's go to the next recommendation.
All right. So, here's my thoughts on, on these. And so, I know you guys are going to have to come back to us because we've asked for data and stuff on a lot of the stuffs and we want statistics because we're, we want to make educated decisions with data behind it, just so you know. Like Siri wants to be able to see what the things are doing so we can say, hey, if we do this, it looks like they're having a regression of fireworks because they did XYZ. Well, let's try XYZ. When we build stuff, I always go with what, like, what problem are we trying to fix? We're adding stuff to what? A minimal, and, and I really don't want to have churches that are next to the, next to the music stands, that are next to the thing, having to figure out exactly how far in footage they are away from each other. I don't care if every church has a fire stand and they're selling fireworks. So, I don't really see the need for a minimum distance. I don't think people are confused on buying fireworks. I think people just go to different areas. I was saddened that the, the, the whole reason we want the fireworks in the community, not only is fireworks, safe fireworks fun, it's also a great way for our nonprofits and our little leagues and our sports leagues to be able to pay for stuff. And we want them to be able to generate revenue from these things. So, I don't see the need for us to do, I don't quite understand why we need to make these changes. So, removing the planning area from the code eligibility fixes what problem?
Sure. So, the, that would, by having planning area in the code, it would allow organizations outside of the city boundaries to operate a stand within the city. So, that would include, you know, the planning areas, Rosemont, Jackson area, and as it continues to grow in those areas.
Totally agree with you. What problem are we trying to fix?
I think that what kind of started this conversation is we are looking to create a more sense of fairness to organizations. Like we had mentioned, we had two stands that did not get property owner approval, who are organizations that are very prominent in, in the cities. So, we're just trying to create more sense of fairness to the organizations who do benefit, you know, the residents of Rancho Cordova.
So, you're saying they would have used a location that exists, this organization that has two stands? So, if you'd given this organization one stand, they could have used that location? Is that where you're going?
Correct.
Were there no other locations in the city that the city could say, why not put it here?
So, the city, we have no set, you know, these are stand areas or anything like that. The distributors, when I spoke to TNT, you know, they partner with the nonprofits and they have, you know, national lease agreements with some areas. They find an area that might look beneficial to a stand, and then they try to get the proper And then they try to get the property owner information. We do, like it was mentioned, there is timelines in the code, which we didn't really evaluate and we're happy to look at as well, too. And there are certain deadlines that do need to be met because we do have other agencies like Sacmetrofire reviews those applications and we need to get them issued on time. So by the time we didn't realize we didn't have property owner authorization, that period and window had closed.
I also know that one of the groups that they have on the period window closed didn't, didn't take the location, not because they didn't have it, but because they didn't want to do, have to stay open during the Fourth of July and they wanted to spend it with their families. So I feel like we're just trying, I mean, like, I understand it, but I don't feel like the outside's coming in and taking our, I do like the idea of maybe we have more responsibility and, and look at when we're giving these out as to what is the nonprofit in the community and how does it benefit the kids? Because this is the easiest way for us to pay for our, our kids' sports and youth sports for a lot of our lower disadvantaged youth. And honestly, it does also help out a lot of our neighborhood churches, you know, that, that make their nut for this organization. So I want to be super careful about that. And honestly, this kind of discussion, I kind of want to have a, an actual community meeting, invite everybody in at this level if we're throwing changes out because I do understand how he's concerned. And I feel like I, you know, I wasn't, when I was reading it and reading the stuff, I do like what the fire marshal or the fire they put out as this. And when we're trying to define words, principal meeting, permanent areas, I do like what they actually put in the, in our thing. But I think we should talk to them and be like, look, are you guys, who, who didn't get a piece of property? What areas are we really trying to do? I, did anyone take two, any, any of the nonprofits take two spots?
There were two nonprofits that had two stands each.
Is that in the same area? Were they like near each other? Was one over here and one over here?
There was one organization that was right next to each other and another organization was more spread out in the city.
Okay, that one I could actually understand. Like you should get, you can, you can have one. I agree with that. That, that might be, that's the, that, that out of all of them makes the most amount of sense because the more nonprofits I can have tilting up fireworks stands makes sense to be able to help out. And I don't really think we need to create a lottery process because I don't think we're overwhelming the area. I do like the area that, like, the only thing I would do is lottery plight if we had a, because the people get to decide where they put their fire stands. It's not up to us. That would be the only thing I want. I would want to get a chance for like baseball or cricket team or them to have a chance to be in the Anatolia parking lot because that happens to be a certain area or be next to the Walmart one. I, I don't, I don't know if that's legal, that we can lottery off locations? That would be the only thing I would lottery off. I wouldn't lottery off whether you get to, to sell fireworks in Rancho Cordova. Like maybe you'd have to be a nonprofit that helps out the community in Rancho Cordova. And then you can put your name in for location lotteries? If we can lock it down to certain location lotteries, I'm down for that because I do think it's, it's fair. But that, that being said, I know some of these people have been in their same location forever. And if I can't find the softball nonprofit I yelled at, you know, I'm looking at you. You know I see you. And so I have to spend a lot of money on fireworks every year. But those are the kind of things, you know, I do think it's fair for everyone to have a chance. There wasn't a fireworks booth in Home Depot and stuff like that. And maybe we could be a little bit proactive and say, here's the areas we got. We'd love to see you take a spot, but here's our, our spots. And if we need to get more, we'll go get more. Because there's, I'm sure everyone, like, most business owners don't mind the fireworks booth because that just brings free business in and makes them bring car traffic through, depending on the business and location. That's kind of what I'm feeling. And I, I would like to do a workshop where I can bring all the guys just to make sure I'm not stepping on anyone's toes.
Well, if I may real quick, I mean, I think we, we have the opportunity to kind of go back and work with the community. I don't know if we need to do that at the council.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying. Like maybe we could go back and actually get them to not.
Well, and I think the, the point of today was kind of just to daylight some ideas and get some direction from you before going back and kind of bringing this conversation back. And so I think the team is happy to kind of work with, with the different users and vendors to.
What's 80,000 divided by five?
It's 85,000.
Eighty-five thousand, 17 booths?
So I think one of the things you have to consider, and I might be speaking out of turn, but if you get too many booths, it becomes not valuable for the folks to do the volunteering to, to make enough for these nonprofits to actually volunteer and, and basically popularize the booth's time to get the revenue back. So there is a diminishing returns from the number of booths that I think is impactful to the community. So I might be, I think I'm seeing nods that that's the least. So I think there is, and that's probably a conversation we have to have with the folks who've been using the, the program and make sure that it's valuable.
If you go back to that slide, it looked like you had 17 applicants, right? So look at previous years, were there more than 17? So again, I'm with Garrett. I don't, I'm not really, I don't care if it's 600 or 1,000 feet between booths. Stands are a great place. Kids love to come. They like to go from one booth to another to see what the options they are. So I'm not particularly putting my hat in that. The other fact that I was thinking is that since you have 17, maybe you could have some sort of or if kind of a category. Like if you hit 17, then if you have, if an organization has two stands, then they would get a limit of one. If you're less than 17 and organizations have two stands, then they can have two stands. So maybe you can put those kind of a or ifs and buts. Councilmember Budge?
Yeah, so go back to the slide. I agree the, the conversation about meeting place or, or location of the organization is definitely something that needs to be, needs to be chatted about. My inclination is that they need really to be located in Rancho Cordova because while I appreciate the fact that people can come and say, we do the majority of our work here in town, you don't really have a way of measuring that or that mean you have to take it at face value. Not, it's not intended to be a criticism. Criticism is just something that needs to be discussed. Personally, I do agree with removing planning area for the simple reason that if you look at that map up there, it's pretty obvious that was aspirational. That's, that was our attempt to, to try to, number one, get back the area that we had lost in the Cordova community when LAFCO limited us to the, to the oddball boundary that, that constitutes the city limits. And number two, it was the theory that what happens on one side of the street affects the other side of the street. And so that's how we ended up with a planning area boundary that's been on that map all this time. So it really has more, no more significance than that. I don't care what the distance is between booths. For one thing, if you, I mean, obviously, major corners, major intersections are really logical places to be. So if, if one is at the southwest corner of Zinfandel and International and one is at the northwest corner, who cares, you know? And then the other thing, you have to look at the, the characteristics of Coloma Road. Every block on Coloma has either a church or a, or a school on it. So it, those are logical places to do that, like at the St. John Vianney parking lot. And I, I, I'm sure Dennis or somebody would tell us, but maybe if an organization wants two booths, but they want to buy one from TNT and one from Phantom, it strikes me that there are probably loyal purchasers. And so having two booths of competing products would just maximize your return? That's a technical question for people like Dennis. I, I think that the limit per population is silly and, and I can't imagine why we'd want to get involved in a lottery. That just, that's much too political for this kind of discussion.
Councilmember Little?
Go with what Dennis says.
So staff, it looks like you have direction for today. There's action items on your end that you need to come back with. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we move over to item 16.2 in Alaska City Clerk to announce the subject.
And remind all the people who came tonight that, that they need to come back when staff organizes workshop.
Yes, please.
It's, it's more they need your feedback. It's not a workshop.
The title for 16.2 is Presentation on Upcoming Neighborhood Traffic Management Program Projects. Adopt a Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Contract Number 2025-92 with Doken Engineering, Inc. in an Amount Not to Exceed $136,593 for On-Call Professional Engineering Services on the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program PH7 Project. And Adopt a Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Contract Number 2025-180 with Doken Engineering, Inc. in an Amount Not to Exceed $377,180 for On-Call Professional Engineering Services on the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program PH8 Project.
And I'd like to call upon 20-year veteran Albert Striker and Edgar Medina for the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Pualpadi, and Councilmembers Albert Striker at the Public Works Department. And our Neighborhood Traffic Management Program and traffic calming in general are in high demand in the community. And the team is going to give an update on the latest.
Could somebody define what's PH?
It's phase. So it's, we, we go, we identify our projects by phase.
How logical.
So this is, represents phase seven and phase eight projects, so. Sorry. So good evening, Mayor Pualpadi, councilmembers Edgar Medina. I don't know how I could follow a 20-year veteran here on this intro, but I'll try my best. So we're here tonight to, to present our latest round of Neighborhood Traffic Management Program Projects, which represents phases seven and phases eight, and also give an update on the Lincoln Village Traffic Calming Projects that is currently underway, some of which have been designed and constructed and some of them are going to be presented to the residents. So tonight, we want to also solicit input from councilmembers as we go through. So feel free to, to stop us at any time if you have any questions or comments. And then ultimately just provide a recommendation that we would like to proceed with the design contracts for the two different projects with Doken Engineering. At this point, I'd like to introduce Kevin Velazquez. He's our, one of our younger engineers on the Traffic Division Team, Team to, to present the projects.
Thank you, Edgar. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Kevin Velazquez. I'm an assistant engineer with Public Works. So a little background on the NTMP and the process to which has brought us here today. The process begins when a resident submits a petition to receive traffic calming in their street or neighborhood. Once the petition has been received, we, as city staff, moves forward to collecting data. Some of the data includes vehicle speeds, volume, and collision history. Once we have that data gathered, we take it to the Neighborhood Traffic Safety Committee, which consists of three Rancho Cordova residents, a Metro Fire representative, and PD representative. The committee selects, reviews and selects the streets to receive traffic calming in the next cycle. And once approved, the, the street or a neighborhood, we then develop a conceptual plan. But in order for this to move forward, we must first determine the level of support by the residents. So we send out ballots and we must receive a minimum response rate of 25% with 67% approval rate. This step also allows us to refine our plan based on the community feedback that we get. And which brings us to the step which, in which we are today. We are here to present the plan, gather input, and ultimately approve the next steps, which will be to prepare engineering drawings and beginning construction. So here we have types of treatment. These are only a few at our disposal. We do have a larger manual, manual from which we can select based on an individual streets. And here we have the citywide project locations. These are five project areas distributed throughout the city. First, we have Tussella Way. This is a segment that runs parallel to Zinfandel Drive. This is between Pedro Way and Charbonneau Way, and we are proposing a single speed hub at this location. Up next, we have Brightwood Drive. And this is between Zinfandel Drive and Cobblestone Drive. And at the intersection of Cobblestone and Brightwood, we are proposing a traffic circle. And at the intersection of Zinfandel and Brightwood, we are proposing bull bouts. Next, we have White Rock Road. And here we are proposing several traffic calming measures, which include speed lumps, bull bouts, race crosswalk, and hardened center lines. Up next, we have Borderlands and Canyonlands. At this location, we are proposing enhanced striping, speed lumps, two-lane chokers, and bull bouts. And lastly, we have the Lincoln Village Neighborhood. And as you can see from the map, we have done several traffic calming measures on Lincoln Village Drive. But we are proposing to, to add to, to that on Lincoln Village Drive, which include a traffic circle in Meeting Island by the end of 2025. And in addition to Lincoln Village Drive itself, we are expanding our efforts to the rest of the neighborhood as well as countryside. And in those, we are also proposing a traffic circle in Meeting Islands. And just as a reminder, we are, these are all being constructed in temporary material with the intent to build these out at our, at our Lincoln Village Neighborhood Rehab Pavement Project.
Yeah, so for tonight, our recommendation, as I stated earlier, is that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute contracts number 2025-180 in the amount of $377,180 and contract number 2025-92 in the amount of $136,593 with Doken Engineering, both of which are two different contracts for phases seven and eight for the design services. We'd like, as the next steps, we'd like to incorporate any feedback that council wants to provide to the team. As Kevin mentioned, we do have a community outreach meeting scheduled that, actually next week on August 12th at the Community Center at Neil Orchard to not only go over the existing projects that were, elements that were constructed as part of Phase One of Lincoln Village Drive, but also the, the next round of traffic calming that is on some of the other adjacent local streets, both in Lincoln Village and Countryside. We, we clearly want to make sure that we, we provide the necessary input to, or background on the projects to the residents and engage their, their level of support for those improvements. Depending on which elements those are for Lincoln Village and Countryside, it's whether, it's going to depend on whether we construct it this year or next year. And then ultimately, we are going to, once contract execution is complete, start the final design for the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program Projects, Phases Seven and Eight, and get those ready for construction in summer of next year.
Question? So seven and eight are both Lincoln Village?
Councilmember Budge, no. Seven is actually a part of, seven and eight are not in Lincoln Village Drive at all. Lincoln Village Drive and Countryside are actually separate projects that were already active as part of a prior project. We were just want to make sure that council member, council was aware of those projects that are active.
Okay. So Lincoln Village stands alone?
Yeah.
I think there are two separate slides, actually. Recommendation, and then once we're done with that, next steps.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go back to the one about Mill Station. Oh, I see where you're talking about.
Is that the, is that where they, they're concerned about people getting hit?
Or slowing that down right there?
That's where they've asked for, that's where the kids the other day asked for solar lights so that they could walk safely to White Rock Park. So you all should take note of that.
I know, I think White Rock Elementary, I think the teachers are the ones that reached out to us about the calming aspect right here. Is that correct? Right here, where we're starting to try to slow it down?
I can't speak to, to that, but we have received a lot of feedback. I can't speak to, to that, but we have received a lot of feedback from the school, and not necessarily specific from the principal, but the residents themselves have a lot of, a lot of input on this corridor.
Yeah, I agree. I know exactly where this is. The, the teachers came and talked to us about it. They were really concerned, because people have been hit. Okay.
So I think the bull bouts are great. I really do. Places like White Rock and Laurelhurst, I think that is, up close to the freeway there. What do you call the ones, like on Bear Hollow at Sprouts? What did you call those?
Those would be two-lane chokers.
Okay, there's two-lane chokers. Albert and I have had this conversation. When you take a road that people are used to driving all over on, and you put these things out there, if you don't put a light on them, then they get run over. And I know people who have run over the ones on Bear Hollow, and just didn't see them, or it was dark, or whatever. And it's a really great idea. It's just that it needs something like one of those flashing school crosswalk signs, something like that. And actually, those have been enhanced lately. I saw something somewhere that they've kind of upgraded those things, so that they do something else. But, but just, if you're going to do two-lane chokers, let's put something more visible up there, so people don't run over them.
Can we do that, Albert?
There are certainly combinations of lighting, striping, colored curbs.
Stripping and colored curbs, don't do it at night.
We need lighting, and may flashing lights.
We need something visible, really visible.
Appreciate the input. We'll make sure to evaluate the visibility of all of them.
Thank you.
Cool.
Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Council, any other comments or questions? If not, we can go for a motion.
Move approval of the expenditures as proposed.
Second.
Roll call.
Uh, councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander is absent. Councilmember Little is absent. Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Yep.
Mayor Pulepotti?
Yes. Okay, with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy 20th. Maybe you can make that bold out with your name on it and put 20. It's pretty exciting to me. I like that.
We'll count down till Edgar gets there.
Council, do we have any future agenda items?
Recording in progress.
Hearing none, I will adjourn the meeting to closed session.
And I do not have any public comment for closed session.
You gestured on the recording?